And I am calling to order the Plymouth Planning Board Meeting of June 16th. So we'll begin with a roll call. Rebecca Hansen.
I'm here.
Phil.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Mike Ahern is excused. Mark is excused. Susan?
Here.
Alternate members, Zach Terrell, Mike Bouchard.
Present.
Peter?
Here.
And Guy, absent. Okay, so as much as we have two absent members, I will invite our alternates to sit on as voting members tonight. So Peter and Mike. I should also mention that June is not going to be here this evening as she is not feeling well today. All right, so the next up is our review of minutes from June 2nd. I noticed that the, if I may, the board was pleased to congratulate Plymouth Regional High School's athletes upon their return following their success.
That was a highlight of the minutes for sure. And of the meeting itself. Did anyone figure out what team that was?
Tennis.
It was tennis.
Tennis.
I think if it was two weeks ago, yeah, it was tennis. I was trying to figure out what was going on.
I tried. You did, you found more specifics than I.
Should we amend the minutes to reflect that that was the tennis team?
Was the meeting interrupted for some time?
Well, we were doing a walk around and they were coming through the rounded emphasis as we were.
Yeah.
We were like, "It's a motorcade for us" or something.
We were it. We also might have thought that we were waiting for, you know, to hear the great news and we're waiting.
So we cheered them on.
Yeah.
We didn't know who, but we cheered them on.
I also appreciated the mention of Nathaniel P. Biddy Rogers in the minutes as well.
Welcome. All right. Are there any other comments?
Nothing except to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Lots of abstentions.
Do we have enough people to?
Oh, from our previous meeting?
We have a quorum. All that matters is you have a simple majority of people.
Of your quorum.
Yeah.
We actually were talking about this at some point.
Yeah. Put in a order.
Yeah.
I think we got, there were no, in opposition, right?
All right, so the minutes from June 2nd are approved. Up next is acknowledgement of communications received.
All right, so there was one communication received by planning staff or addressed to the board, addressed to the board via planning staff. And this was from Justin Walsh. And he says, "Hey, planning board, I'd love to have you discuss the Emerson Broadway section of Highland Street and consider it for future rezoning. The property I own, 80/82 Highland, is not being properly used due to the restrictive single-family zoning requirements, and I'm exploring redevelopment options. I enjoyed the talk of form-based zoning at today's planning board meeting. Perhaps this could be, perhaps this could help with properties like mine." Justin Walsh.
Thank you, Justin. So that little stretch there is a complicated stretch and a road with a lot of different uses, including single-family, and it's not really on our agenda at this point to do any work there. Although, thank you for the, for the letter. And I would say, you know, if, if there are planning board members who want to take this up, we can certainly consider this at some point. Are there any comments at this point?
My only comment is that there's, you know, if he feels like he's restricted from doing something that's not an alignment zoning, you know, is foul for a variance or special exception depending on what his plans are.
Yeah, thank you. Good point.
I'm assuming this is something beyond just a two-family dwelling, which is allowable by special exception.
Yeah. The current property is a two-family dwelling.
Okay.
There is no other information about what type of use.
Okay. So it is being, oh, okay, all right. No further comments.
Okay.
Perhaps he wants to do something other than a two-family dwelling.
No, and I think you're, I think you're right that that one seems to be maybe a good candidate for, I mean, it could be a good candidate for a variance.
Okay. Up next, applications and public hearings. So we have one, which is for New Car, just as a reminder. This is PID number 212026, 14 Town West Road in the industrial and commercial development zone. This is New Car Ford of Plymouth. And this is a continuation from two months ago. Get the date on here.
April 21st and May 19th.
Thank you. April 21st and May 19th. And the applicant like to provide an update on where we stand?
Sure. Can you, can Mike or?
I think we can hear you.
Whoa.
Oh, for the, for the recording. Are we good?
I'm fine without it, but I'm just checking.
You've been here enough that you noticed that something's missing.
Something's missing from the.
Thank you, Joseph.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so good to see you all again. I, Mike Kucher is also online. He's the architect for the project. So I can just kind of give you a brief overview of the additional materials that were provided, you know, the revisions that were made, and then we can just take questions. So in response to the original hearing in April, we have provided revised plans that show existing and proposed parking layout along with the parking calculations that line up with your zoning ordinance for the various uses. Let's see that the proposed use does, we are reducing the public parking on the site, but it does meet the required parking for the site. We've also kind of noted the inventory areas, the areas where they're putting display vehicles just to delineate, you know, the uses for those spaces. We also did a drainage report. It was requested by the board, looking at the 12-inch culvert that exists under the driveway to Town West Road. We can dig into that if you'd like, but we provided the documentation for the capacity of that culvert. In addition, there were, just in response, so obviously we've also provided the architectural plans, so floor plans and elevations of the building. And if there are questions on those, obviously Mike, Mike can take, take those. We also received the staff report this morning, and in response to that, I can, I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments. So one thing was, that was brought up, the monitoring wells on the site were no longer shown. So I can give a little background on that. So the monitoring wells were put in a couple of years ago as a result of a underground heating fuel tank was being removed and a little bit of fuel leaked during the removal. And so as a part of that environmental cleanup, we worked with the state to do monitoring, basically monitoring groundwater around the site and reporting on that for the last two years. DES has closed the site, so monitoring is done, and the, and the monitoring wells have been, have been removed. So I have provided to Joseph this morning the letter from DES outlining the closure of the site, and they were decommissioned very recently, I think, in earlier this month. So the PVC is removed, basically it's filled with a bentonite slurry, like a slurry concrete, and then it's capped. So that's to address one of those. The other one was with respect to the setback along Town West Road. So we did look into that, and we have shown that incorrectly on our plan, so we can modify that. Essentially, the 30-foot front setback to that private road should have been off of the right-of-way of the road and not the center line, which is the prop, the property line in this case is the center line of, of the road, but we will, we can modify that as a, as a potential condition of approval if we get to that tonight. I also, I do have a sketch of it if you'd like to see it, but basically the addition is 72 feet from that right-of-way, so we're well outside of the setback for the building. So that's kind of the, the overview, and, you know, I don't know if you want Mike to go over the architectural plans, or we can just take questions as you would like.
Just as a clarification, because the, which I'm sure you're probably aware, like the question of if we get that to the conditions of approval tonight, of course, if we don't, if we're going to be up against the timeframe and asking for, yeah, the 65-day timeframe question.
Right, I did see that in the comments as well.
We'll be looking for extensions, but we'll see if we get there. But since you mentioned, you know, if we, if we get there tonight.
Right.
So we did have a few staff recommendations.
Yes.
I don't know if you'd like to hear from the architect first, or we can go through them as well.
Do they have to do with the building, or some of the things we've heard about already?
Some of our recommendations have to do with, you know, what Will has spoken to.
So, yes, let's, let's.
I can give a little bit of an update from our end. So as mentioned, you know, we did receive those updated plans, and we, you know, we, as indicated in the staff report, you know, the, the monitoring wells were removed and the setbacks, we believe, were depicted, you know, from the wrong lot line. But the revised plans, the parking areas have been added. Everyone's been provided with a copy of that drainage report, and I just gave the summary page printed here today, but you have the full, you know, the full report in your emails. You know, we did receive those architectural elevations as well. So, you know, we do have some, some recommendations, you know, depending on what direction the board would like to have, or the board would like to head. You know, we would suggest that the board, you know, discuss the stormwater drainage report that was provided by Horizons Engineering, you know, and discuss whether the board is comfortable with the findings of that report, you know, with regards to the monitoring wells. We did receive that documentation. As these other things come up, I'm happy to go over, you know, you know, recommended conditions if the board is interested, or other items, but we do recommend, you know, discussing the drainage report.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, if we'd like to speak to the elevations and the architecture?
Sure.
Any comments to make?
Mike, are you able to, he was, not sure he was having trouble with his audio. Are you able to speak? Can't hear him.
Is it turned up?
Trying to turn the volume up.
Can anyone hear me?
There we go.
There we, yeah.
The volume was, was turned down on it.
Great. Good evening, planning board.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have, I guess, do you have questions with regard to the elevations? I can, I can tell you what, conceptually what we're doing or proposing to do. The, the front portion of the existing building would be torn down, which is kind of a wood structure type building. And a new showroom would be put in its place, and then we're adding the service write-up area on the side of the building. And the elevations reflect that we are proposing to upgrade the siding pretty much all around the entire building. The brick, there's a little bit of brick on one elevation that we would paint. The balance of it is metal siding that would be replaced. There's a, for lack of a better word, there's like a fake mansard that wraps around the, the pre-engineered building at the back of the building. That remains, but we would be taking the siding off of it and putting a horizontal, like, ribbed siding. Most of this is, is kind of the Ford design package that, that they use on all their buildings. So we'd be using, you know, their, their recommended product, which is, in that, in that situation is a horizontal, kind of a charcoal-colored ribbed panel. The whole front of the building is an ACM panel, and obviously we can tell from the elevations is, you know, a fair amount of glass. That's kind of the gist of the elevations.
Just to make a quick comment, like, I mean, I look at the elevations and the, like, yes, like, that's the typology of a car dealership. It's pretty easily recognizable, and it's kind of.
It's right out of, it's right out of their design guidelines.
So, I mean, there is a question about signage, and I'm not sure if where, how this has been thought about, how this is going to be integrated or not.
Right, and my understanding is that, and Mike, maybe you have more, but my understanding from, from Sean is that we'd be coming back for the signage. It hasn't been decided yet. Is that correct, Mike?
That, my understanding, yeah. I mean, I know there's very limited signage on the building now. We have that sign on the side of the building, and then the fairly low freestanding sign at the street. Obviously, I think the owner wants to take advantage of whatever allowances exist for signage, but when, we understand that there's, you know, it's pretty restrictive. So I think it's, it's a, it's a subject that they want to breach as we progress, and not necessarily as part of the building.
Thank you.
So for now, the proposal is to keep the existing signage as is and not show it as part of the change.
That's correct. Yeah. And June did bring that up at the beginning of this application, and the owners just aren't quite ready to decide what they want to do with the signage, so basically we're proposing to keep existing as is.
Really, the only thing that would come back to us would be if it, you know, there's another business and there's a master sign. Other than that, it's just all happening creatively, yeah.
I would say that's actually a more convenient way of dealing with it, honestly.
It gets fairly prescriptive as far as, you know, your buildings, you have this much access in different zones, that you have interior-lit signs and others don't, which we talked about last time.
Yeah, you know, part of it is the, the existing building, you know, didn't really have an elevation that, that afforded itself to having signage on it, you know, with the gable roof kind of facing the wrong direction. And obviously now we don't have any of those sloped roofs, so, you know, we just need to explore what it is we're going to be allowed to do as we progress.
So, I would say, like, we're going to have to come to the issue of the stormwater runoff. But before we get there, are there any other questions not pertaining to that?
It occurs to me that the 30-foot setback from the edge of the right-of-way is going to be, appears that it's going to be into the parking lot. Is there, are you planning to change the edge of the parking lot there, or is that existing?
That's existing, and actually I can show, I have a sketch that I.
I was going to say, I just spaced it off.
Just this morning, that's a dimension sketch, so it does come with just like barely into the.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was.
Into the parking lot.
Okay.
It exists now.
Okay.
We're not, basically, a little disturbance is this.
And you're not planning to change that boundary at all? So that's, it's, it's not in conformance now, but it's existing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Barely out of conformance.
Or, I mean, or is parking, is parking, okay, I was going to say, is it parking? Yeah, that's the difference, I think.
I believe parking in the front setback can be 15, but regardless, we're not planning to change that.
Turn that if you want. All right. It's structures, not parking, that we're dealing with on 30.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments before we take a look at the reports?
No.
I have one.
Yeah?
Peter? You mentioned the existing metal siding will be replaced. How does that impact, how does that impact, and are there any exterior building lights? What's the plan with those lights, if there are any?
The only lights around the perimeter of the, the sides and the rear of the building are going to be wall packs just for, you know, required lighting.
And are they removed and replaced in kind, or are they improved, or?
Maybe improved dark sky type fixtures.
Well, do we have any thoughts on the stormwater report?
They can just, you know, the, the report was provided by Horizons Engineering. We currently don't have, in our site plan regulations, what, you know, what level of storm you have to design to, so they went off of our subdivision regulations, which is, you know, a 10-year storm event, which per the, per their analysis, the culvert is adequate to meet those storm events. You know, that's per the report given to us by Horizons. And, you know, that is something where it's, it's sort of the board's discretion. We did not have Mike McNally review this in the past. There have been times when the board has wanted to have that, or not wanted to have that, depending on the changes, you know, for an existing site like this. Whereas we do have a, you know, an engineer's report that states it will meet it, but, you know, we suggest reviewing and considering that, and considering this report. If the board would like to pursue having Mike McNally review it, we would be, you know, happy to do that, but, you know, we would have to come to an agreement with the applicant about time extension.
Okay.
Give it to Mike.
You're, you're looking over at this.
Looking at me, so I looked at you.
Okay. I was just kind of looking at the scan in the room. While we're all thinking about this for a moment, and presumably the monitoring wells and the paperwork you received is all, like, is all good, and?
Yeah, so we do, you know, if the board decides to go forward with granting approval, we do have a few recommended conditions. We have some listed on here. We would also recommend some additional, additional conditions if the board were to pursue an approval tonight, and those would include showing the revised setbacks and adding a note to clarify that, you know, the decommissioning of the monitoring wells on the site, adding that as a plan note.
Yep.
So, so those would be sort of addendum to our, to our recommendation if the board proceeds with, with that.
So how do we feel about accepting the Horizons report without our staff?
I guess the only question I have is, is, you know, if we don't have a standard, and they said, you know, the, the report indicates that the culvert is adequate for a 10-year storm, but they also give us, you know, pre and post flow for a 25-year storm. I guess, enough time.
I can comment on that.
Yeah, please.
So we did do the analysis for the 25-year event as well.
Yep.
And the culvert does pass it in both the pre and the post.
Okay.
It backs up, it backs up about an inch over the top of the culvert during the 25-year event, so essentially it's like at capacity. It's not coming up over the road at that point, but during, in the model, it looks like it would, it would basically be using the whole culvert during the 25-year event. So, I mean, my only other comment is anecdotally, like, the owner has said they haven't seen any flooding there. I haven't personally witnessed any, but, so I think, you know, the, the idea is we would, we would, we had also added a note on the plan that that culvert should be flushed and cleaned. It did look like there was a little bit of sediment in, in it when I looked at it, so we would clean it out. Adding the stone at the inlet side of it is going to help with that in the future if the, you know, it should, it shouldn't have sediment in it. So, you know, I mean, I think passing a 25-year event, that's what DOT standards are for culverts under roads. So, I mean, our opinion is that it's adequate for the, for the situation. It's a driveway, so that's our opinion, but, you know.
It's not the only access to the property. Should there, should that culvert wash out, I mean, there's still a rear entrance off of, off the road.
Off the same road, yeah, there's, yeah.
Is there a culvert there? If there is, there's less loading if there, I don't even think that.
I, I think it's unlikely that, you know, there would be a life safety issue if this failed.
Right, the one on the, at the rear, the, the ditch goes the other way. It basically splits at that point, so there's no culvert under that one.
Did you do any calculations on your detention area?
The upstream side on the, on the ditch by the culvert, you mean?
Well, the water has to go somewhere. It goes out towards the highway. You have a detention area out there, don't you? Is there any outlet?
The outlet is a roadside ditch, so basically it's a grass swale that, that comes around Town West and then follows Tenny Mountain Highway, and it eventually, I believe, gets into Clay Brook.
So it goes in between the New Hampshire Electric Co-op property and back around? That swale? Goes back around?
No, I think there's a culvert there. We don't have it on our plan, but, but it basically gets out into the, the DOT's drainage system, which is the roadside ditch.
Oh, I see there's a culvert at the Co-op property that it could go through.
I believe so. That's what the topography looks like, but we didn't shoot, we didn't survey that property, so I don't have a, a shot on that culvert, but I think there is one there. Because Clay Brook's right on the other side, right?
The Co-op property abuts it.
Yeah.
There's a wet one in there.
Right.
So I guess I don't see the need to delay this further because of the stormwater. The, I'm satisfied with the, the stormwater report that we got from Horizons.
I agree.
All right. So I guess other items for the board to consider?
Yeah.
If you'd like, you know, so we do have comments from Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, which, you know, the applicant has been made aware of. You know, there is a oil-water separator that will be relocated, and, you know, those are all going to have to be done through Plymouth Village Water and Sewer's process, and, you know, that's another condition we would recommend if the board were to pursue approval, to secure the necessary approvals. We already discussed the sign question. There was discussion at the beginning of this of a master sign plan application, but it was, you know, as stated, it was decided that that would not be, you know, going forward at this time, but could, could be presented to the board at some future date. And, you know, we would just have the, the two notes that we mentioned, the revision to the. And, you know, we would just have the the two notes that we mentioned, the revision to the to the setbacks. And then, you know, the typical provide as built, you know, provide a timeline. You know, and we would recommend if that were the case, you know, December of 2023 or a time that you, you know, the board would agree on with the applicant.
Do you happen to know if there's a project schedule in mind at this point?
Well, I.
Start construction?
Yeah, I mean, I did talk with the owner this afternoon. I mean, they, depending on when all the approvals come in, I think that they still have to secure contractors. So their thought is it would ideally be like an early 2023 start. But that's kind of depending on materials and contractors, so. But the goal, it would be a 2023 project is the is the goal.
So would an end of 2023 conclusion? Of completion be sufficient probably?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
That would be the hope.
I think just as long as the applicant is aware that if they need an ex, need an extension, just come back before the deadline.
Is it, is it, in the in the regs, is it one year or two years that it's good for?
Normally it's one.
So you're.
I thought we needed.
It's one to start work.
Yeah.
To actually have active development.
The default. The default is, yeah, active substantial development within one, 12 months.
What sounds like is your plan and, or at least.
Right, certainly the plan is to start within a year. But I think, you know, if we could, it looks like staff's recommending that that you stipulate a completion of December 2023, which sounds good to us. And then if we had, I guess.
Actually not specifying a completion date sooner than December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could do, you know, summer of '24, I guess, but I don't know. What would be the process for coming? We just have to come back and try to basically do it again?
My thinking is that it's unnecessarily burdensome. I'd rather say start of construction in 24 months. And I mean, knowing that the construction industry is, and there are lots of supply chain disruptions right now. And I would think that, I mean, if we gave you 24 months to start construction, I mean, that would be my, I don't know if we need an end date on it. I mean, you're, you have your own intention of using this facility. I'm sure that it's not going to be unnecessarily delayed.
And it should be said, if we do have an end date or you do miss, like, the start of construction, you don't have to start the whole process over. If you come before it runs out and ask for an extension, if it looks like, you know, things are really going to happen, then at all likelihood, we'll give you an extension. If we do put those deadlines in place.
And we, yeah, we did have the, yeah, the staff recommendation of, you know, December of 2023, given the 2023, you know, construction season, you know, given that, you know, there are all these delays with contractors and this is, you know, that's that's very common recently. So so we felt that was an appropriate, you know, completion date. You know, we would, we would ask that the board, you know, put a condition of providing as built once the, you know, once it's complete. But but we felt that that would be an appropriate, an appropriate timeline for the board to specify, just to sort of keep the, you know, so the board would have a sense of when the construction should be wrapping up. And of course, as you mentioned, there's the always the possibility of asking for an extension if if that's not looking likely.
So just like to, just to see where we're at, just to take a little check here. So in terms of elevations, stormwater report and other monitoring wells seems to be taken care of. Are we pretty comfortable moving ahead with the stormwater report and the elevations and all that? So are we really down to thinking about construction timeline at this point?
I have another question about the other condition, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to, I'm curious as to why we have a condition about sign permits. Is that just because there's no sign as part of the the plan? Is that, is that why we have this here? Because I don't think I've ever seen that as a condition.
Yeah, it was a note that we had, just because there has been some discussion about signs. I know there was a variance requested at some point that that was not approved for some sign modifications. So the discussion has always been that, you know, signs would have to conform with the zoning ordinance.
Although even if we didn't put that in here, the condition.
That's correct.
It would still be true.
Yeah.
Absolutely correct. So, yeah.
That was, that was it for me until we start talking about.
My, my thinking about signs is along the lines of Peter's concern about lighting is that I think, you know, the as-built, I think if we request an as-built plan that depicts updates to lighting and signage, I think that would be sufficient in my mind. Would you feel okay addressing signage the same way you've requested to address lighting?
I concur.
Okay.
As for the construction completion date, I think, well, I know June's been sort of guiding us to put deadlines and dates on things so things don't get dragged out forever.
That at the same time being burdensome.
Exactly.
So finding the, how do you mediate there?
And I, but I certainly think this project is, you know, once, once construction starts, it, it has to stop because there has to become complete because otherwise it's a, you know, I don't, I agree, I don't see this one being one that just, you know, we don't get a.
Time is critical on this.
The minute they tear that showroom down, they're under the gun to get one done and.
Yep.
Got back open again.
It's a good time to do it while they don't have many cars. All dealerships are, all the dealerships are. I know it's not. I feel, I feel for them, honestly. It's, but all, you know, it sounds like all the dealers are in the same boat. Nobody can get new cars.
Yeah, that's, it's rough.
They, they have quite a lot of used inventory, I'm impressed.
A lot better than than a lot of dealerships, I see.
Yep. Yep.
So do we want to, are we, do we want to have a completion date of December 2023? Or do we want to have a, like a start date of June 2023 and leave it at that? I like, I kind of like a completion date myself.
I'd rather give them more time and say, I would say give them a start date of June 2024, just in case things don't line up and completion within a year.
The way things are going with lead times on materials and stuff, I think the pushing it out longer is only fair.
I just don't.
It's really crazy right now.
I guess we're not saying, though, that, okay, you have to come start again. You just have to come back and say, hey, we need more time. And we say, okay, you can have more time. I, I'm just wondering if there's any consideration sort of on our end where things might change or zoning might change. In, you know, two years from now, things might be different. Who knows that we'd be holding them to a difference? Yeah, I don't know. That's kind of what I'm thinking is what might change that would make, you know, asking for extension be the best way to go versus.
And I think.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I'm kind of leaning towards, I mean, our general rule of thumb here is to have some kind of active development in a year. And that seems like it would be everyone's goal. And if for some unforeseen reason or even partially foreseen, given all the circumstances right now at construction, that had to be extended and you came back and asked for that without having to go through this whole process again, I think we'd be pretty understanding. I mean, I can't guarantee the future, but it would seem reasonable to me at this point.
And I think we would, we would advise that, you know, the staff, that the, you know, if there's a timeline implemented here, that it, that it be focused around a completion date, you know, rather than a start and completion date perhaps. I think that, you know, we would have that as-built as sort of a indicator of the project's completion. It's just, you know, monitoring the start and end date versus just having, you know, one date. I think, you know, between the applicants and yourselves, you may want to discuss what, you know, what their timeline is and what they feel is reasonable. But I think, you know, having some timeline of an end date and then the ability to do a, you know, of course, always the ability for the board to extend later. But I think you can, you know, a reasonable agreement on a completion date is, could be helpful in this situation.
My, my only comment on that, I guess, in general, is that the regulations refer to a start date, right? A start date, there's never been, this is not, setting a completion date has never really been a thing in Plymouth. But it's just, for this project, I don't think it really matters that much. Because I think, as, as Mike pointed out, as soon as they start, it's going to be like, it's going to be done in a month, probably.
You have no showroom until you're done.
But I just, you know, I think, I don't know, it makes sense to set conditions that are in line with the regulations. And so if you wanted to say, instead of a year start, start within, start by December 2023, that gives them a little bit more lead time. But anyway, just setting a completion deadline, I don't know, it seems like it's like a, it's not in the regulations, right?
If I can, if I can interject, I mean, I would think that the reason that you have that ordinance in there is that if your planning laws change in that timeframe, that, you know, that if you've exceeded that timeframe, then you need to revisit with the site plan, with the site planning board. But once you've started a project, you know, you can't like change the rules on somebody. I guess that's.
Right.
Yeah, the issue of.
The laws which we started.
Right, and the, and the question of vesting, I think, is a, is a separate one from, from what we're talking about here. And the board has of, you know, in, I would say, most recent approvals, given a, you know, we're asking for a completion by a certain date, just because, you know, the number of projects that are outstanding with no specific completion date and no, you know, not necessarily any sense of when that might be, you know, when that might be happening. So, you know, I think that, that's been, that's been a practice of late and I think it's appropriate. I think, you know, I, I think it's also appropriate to take into account the materials delays and the contracting delays and taking that into account as a sort of a separate question from the, the vesting provision about if the, if the regulations were to change.
Yeah, so ours.
Yeah.
Our site plan regs do say that approved site plans shall lapse of active and substantial building or development has not begun within one year. And that we may, for reasonable cause, be extended for more than, or for no more than one year. So I feel like the condition of completion date is an additional condition we would choose to put on there. So just to clarify on that. With this project, you know, really, I'm kind of ambivalent about.
I mean, a lot of projects, there are reasons where they could drag on. I don't suspect this one would drag on. So in some ways, I, I mean, I am sympathetic to having a bit more of a general kind of push towards completion dates with many projects. In this case, I think I'd be more apt to be a bit more flexible. Because I, I can't imagine you want to go without a showroom once you start, like, start to work.
We have no interest in having tie-up for eight months. You know, it's, it's an image thing with a car dealership, right? So I mean, the quicker they get it done, the better.
So I'll propose that we grant conditional approval with the conditions being that on completion of the project, an as-built plan be submitted showing any permitted signage and any exterior lighting, that the resolution of the location of the oil and water separator be addressed with Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District and that location should also be noted on the as-built. I will say that.
Setbacks?
You have the plan be updated to show setbacks from property boundaries, not road center lines.
Do we want a note from the DES about?
We have the letter.
We have it.
Okay.
I think they can go in the file.
Do we want it noted on the plan or is that good?
You know, we don't think, we, we do recommend adding a note about the decommissioning as a condition. That being said, we do have the, the correspondence from DES, but it's also not a bad to have for documentation purposes on the plan.
Yep, so, yep, continuing with conditions, a note, a note be added to include closure, to address closure of the pre-existing monitoring wells. And I'm going to recommend the condition that we issue a start date of, a start of construction no later than December 2023. Which is bending our rules, but it's our rule to bend.
Is that a motion?
It was a motion.
Do you think that covers the rece, the securing permits from Water and Sewer? You mentioned the monitoring wells. No, the oil-water separator.
I did mention the oil-water separator be resolved and included on the as-built.
Did you want to add something about Water and Sewer permits and that the signs need a sign permit, not just on the as-built, or were you good with how you had it?
I'm presuming that all existing regulations will be enforced.
I second Phil's motion.
All right, so we have a, is that clear enough to you, Joseph?
Yep, as-built showing lighting and signage, oil-water separator must be permitted by Plymouth Village Water and Sewer. Update to show all, you know, the correct setbacks. Note the closure of the monitor, add a note documenting the closure of the monitoring wells and then with a, with a start date by December of '23.
So we have a motion to approve as elaborated with conditions by, as Joseph has elaborated. Any further discussion?
Actually, a question, did we, point of order, do we need to open up a public hearing? Or is it a continued public hearing?
I would, I would be willing to table my motion until there's an opportunity for the public to speak.
Thank you, Rebecca. So it's 7:17 and we're going to continue the public hearing. Are there comments from the public? All right. Shall we close the public hearing?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, like, close the public hearing? It's 7:17. Out of your memory?
What's that?
You do.
Well, we, we stated the motion.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so we're.
Seconded.
Okay, so we're still good? Are there, is there any further discussion from the board? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Okay. So this application is, for new car is conditionally approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Hearings, hearings, yeah. That's a hard thing to remember is that every, every hearing, if you're in a hearing, you should have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. So planning staff, are there any informational or pre-application reviews?
Yes, so none at this time.
Oh, okay, thank you. Kind of fake this out there.
But it was pretty exciting when he said no.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That's true. Because it could be at some point, but just not tonight.
Okay, other business for members of the board and planning staff. Site plan review regulations and discussion about revisions. Do you have any updates there, Joseph?
Yeah, we do have an update, you know, so as discussed at the previous planning board meeting, we're sort of proceeding as we decided there, you know, staff, we're working together to create some revisions to the document that we can put forward to you guys. You know, and I gave a little just sort of executive summary of those revisions. But our focus, as, as we've discussed all along, you know, revising applicability and scope of review standards. We're cleaning up the administrative portions, which is, you know, sections one through eight, just updating them, putting in citations wherever we can, statutory citations, making sure they're up to date. You know, it's dates back to 2002, so generally the same. We're making sure everything's, everything's as it should be. You know, it's dates back to 2002, so generally the same, but we're making sure everything's, everything's as it should be. Um, we're continuing to revise the general standards, uh, where we can pull in current best practices. Um, and a big focus of this, as sort of indicated as a priority by the board, was, you know, revise the stormwater standards to sort of give some specificity about, uh, what kind of stormwater management is required, which, you know, as we saw tonight, currently it's, it's not as specific as it could be. Um, it's more on case by case, but right now, uh, you know, we've, we've taken a look at this and Mike Vignali is, uh, the, the town engineer is reviewing, uh, these guidelines and is giving us feedback. We expect this week to get that feedback, uh, from him and then we'll incorporate, you know, incorporate those recommendations as well into the proposed document. And we'll, we'll continue working on the other sections as well. Um, you know, we, as I said, we expect those, Mike Vignali revisions to be coming pretty soon. Um, you know, we expect to provide.
Can I ask a question like that? Um, if, if he's still working on that, would you mind extend, extending a question to him tomorrow and asking if the 25-year recurrence interval is the right storm event to be evaluating for stormwater sizing?
Yeah, definitely. And that's the, that is the type of stuff that we have him looking at, um, you know, what type of storm to design for, um, you know, the, you know.
Similar thoughts. I mean, my, my thinking is that, you know, with increased, we're, we're, I think we're already seeing increased frequency of and intensity of flooding. Is it, you know, is it worth looking at a 50-year flood event or a 100-year flood event for drainage, for, for sizing stormwater calculations?
What's, what's normal town standards?
Well. Yeah, that's, I think it's for up to, that's my question is, you know, is, is there a standard? Is, is DOT still using 25 for highways?
Yeah.
Yeah, and as, you know, as I mentioned, that's why we, we felt it was, it was particularly appropriate to have Mike Vignali take a look at that section and give us his, you know, as the towns engineer, his recommendations of best, best practices for that. Uh, but we are, you know, sort of, I guess, the direction that it would be heading would be to specify, uh, you know, what standard to design to, um, you know, that's in line with current best practices, you know.
I'd say over the last couple of months, it had been several rumblings on the board from various people about like being a bit more stringent and preparing for a future with more rain events and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so.
At least bigger ones.
Yeah.
To pair those sentiments, I would ask that Mike, um, use particular and specific references to New Hampshire D E S A O T regulations as well as New Hampshire Stormwater Manual. They are both very specific to this state and they do typically include either 10 or 25-year for culvert analysis. But then they have stream bank channel and they have flood events. So those also should be, um, it's, you know, I guess, kind of a three-tiered milking stool type of thing. It's not just one, you need to look at all three. So what the board viewed this evening, uh, was singular in purpose. So it would be nice if they were a little more comprehensive.
Right. I, I think, you know, my, my perspective on what we're doing, I think it was, you know, examining an existing site where they were doing minimal site work already. And I don't even know if it was, I still question whether or not it was right to even look at that as it, as it wasn't proposed being changed or altered. But, you know, certainly if there was a new site, it would certainly make sense to have all of the drainage a, a much more stringent standard.
And for the applicant to know our expectations going in more clearly, um, by updating our regulations.
Right.
Right. Well, what, not to belabor that too much, but, um, what the board did here is there is an increase in flow. They proved it. What the board did here is that the culvert is maxed. So that's good that the town and the board and this applicant now has that information on file. So there's a benchmark, if you will. So moving forward, you know, you, I think it was, as I said, bare minimum. I did have one other comment, uh, in terms of, uh, engineering review in general, not pertaining to Mr. Vignali, but in general for the town. This may be a little too progressive for Plymouth. I don't know, but I'm gonna mention it anyway. Most municipalities have more than one municipal review engineer. And the reason is some developers want a choice. They want either the one of, you know, chief cook and bottle washer type like Mike, or they want a larger firm that may be able to review, uh, site, traffic, or soils, or structure, all under one roof. And presumably there could come a time when Plymouth sees perhaps a development like Market Basket, you know, uh, that whole area that had significant litigation. And there, there should have been a, um, commensurate firm reviewing that type of a project. So I would suggest that the town consider, um, going back out for competitive municipal review services with the idea of having, uh, an A or a B or a, or a one or a two. I don't, you don't need to differentiate, but, but the intent of having, uh, more than one or options. Um, I think that, I don't know, maybe the same could be said for legal. I don't know how much legal work we have, but, um, sometimes, you know, planning applications can become contentious. I don't know if the town council or town, um, councilor, uh, typically addresses that or if that goes out for review too. I don't know how that's handled, but I'm just, I'm trying to draw parallels. You know, the same could be held for legal as, as, it's just a professional service, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the comment. We'll definitely, you know, take that under consideration. We have, you know.
I also wanted this, wanted to add, um, Rebecca mentioned at our last meeting, the potential of having a kind of like quick review sheet for the planning board, which I know we talked about again.
Yup.
Um, and, um, I definitely do think that would be a very beneficial thing for all of us. Um, when we're kind of, you know, we're looking at an application and we're kind of like flip through the regulations, hopefully, and see how they match up with what we see. And then we have the other checklist on the actual application, which is, it's easy to believe, oh, that, that's all you have to do is like, look at that checklist, but it's not, cause you have, so to have that sheet, as Rebecca suggested, with a kind of one-page overview of what we're looking for, to remind us each time we're looking at an application.
Like a checklist?
Definitely wanna, yeah, like a checklist for us. Um, I definitely, I just wanna reiterate, that would be really valuable.
Yeah, definitely.
I, I can say that the downside of having a checklist is sometimes people only look at the checklist and there's a lot of detail that they leave out because it's not on the checklist. And you can't have a checklist that's as comprehensive as your regulation. So sometimes it's better to just rely on the regulation and say, hey, this is it.
I mean, on, on the, on the flip side of that is, you completely forget about this one particular thing.
Right, right.
And whereas if you remember it, you might say, I need more clarification, I'll go back.
Yeah.
Um, but I, yeah, it's true.
We were taught, oh, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
It was the, um, I think just.
It was, it was a few pages in there.
Yeah. The general standards.
Including design standards and other, other landscaping and all those sorts of things.
We definitely felt that was a, you know, we definitely took that suggestion and are sort of working on that in tandem with the site plan regulations, um, you know, something that we can show to the board for, you know, consideration at that time. It's another that we, you know, we would wanna present it to the board for feedback and comment.
And I think it's easy to forget, we do have design standards and we do have standards for plantings. And maybe they could be clarified in some ways, but, I mean, they are there and we can use them to say like, this elevation just doesn't cut it. And we see we don't wanna be overly restrictive in that power, but it is there.
Give it just a, more of a listed format of what the design standards are, even if it wasn't. Allows you to sort of apply each one to each case.
I would think that based on our experience tonight, our site plan review regulations should probably include something that says, you know, signage, you know, if an elevation, if a facade is being updated and the signage is going to be updated, signage must be included on the plan. That's, I, I, if we, if it doesn't say that now and they're waiting to come back and do that through the permit process, like, I don't think it serves them well. It doesn't serve the town well. If there ever were to be an issue, it certainly would be easier to resolve it at this stage than a permitting stage.
Yeah.
Yeah. And at this time, you know, we, we had, we did discuss with the applicant, the signage question before this came in.
And lighting for that, to that point.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we, you know, in, in a previous, you know, and we had requested that they clarify whether they were changing any signage. Um, but yeah, it, it is, uh, you know, the point is, uh, I think a good one. And I think it, you know, comes to, in this particular case, there's a little bit of a backstory relating to the signage.
Right.
As well, you know, the discussion of a master sign plan, because I think some of the signage that was being proposed uh, wouldn't fit, uh, with current zoning. So there was a, a question of, you know, there was the previous variance, which wasn't successful, um, and then sort of a question of how they wanted to proceed, sort of figuring that out before they brought anything to us. But yeah, the, the point is.
This is where Ford's design standards get squeezed into ours.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that happens everywhere though.
Yeah, it does.
If you drive through New London and look at the Dunkin' Donuts, it's not orange and purple.
Look at McDonald's sign in Meredith with the frame on it.
It, it looks very much like a small home with minimal signage. So like you, you can, I mean, towns can enforce appearance standards that are not in alignment with.
They can.
Corporations can, can adapt if they need to, but.
You know, that is, all, you know, that is a, that is an option.
In, in my perspective, I mean, that's the place like, um, you know, I don't really see, this is not, I, I find it to be kind of pretentious though too, when you see a Dunkin' Donuts that clearly is not in alignment with their corporate image. Like Dunkin' Donuts, who cares?
Who knows what it looks like?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a shot.
Dunkin's now, they've officially changed.
Thank you.
Interesting. I don't know, maybe it's a nice break from it, like every shade of coffee on the.
Something to be said for architectural honesty too. But.
Thank you, Joseph.
Yes, yeah, definitely. And, you know, as I think to your earlier point, Phil, uh, one thing that, you know, I think would also be taken into consideration with this is, you know, an existing site where a small, there's a small change, as we saw tonight, where, you know, there's a slight change in it, but not necessarily a whole new site. There might be more of a option for different, you know, perhaps different review criteria. That's, you know, that's obviously something we're working on and we're looking to, to put before the board once we get.
That could be based on, you know, square footage affected, or it could be based on percentage of floor space affected too. Where, you know, you could do either and for a small business that's adding, you know, 200 square feet to a 500 square foot space, it's, it's different than adding 10,000 square feet to a 100,000 square foot space.
Okay. Um, are there comments about site plan review?
I, I think it, I did, we're making great progress on it and I, I would like to commend planning staff and board on it.
All right. Um, are there public comments? Public?
Guess not.
Okay, um, so I will, um, post the public comments. Um, and.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
You, you can tell who's chair.